Uh, Dumbo.
Larry wanted to have a...
So if we could give it just a minute, uh, Chris.
Computer's not working.
Yeah, one of the presentation one went out, so we're hooking our laptop up to... We're hooking the laptop up there, the laptop spot. I'm taking the cameras to... Do you want to just put that laptop up top?
Um...
Oh, we can keep it open up top.
Can I?
C nine.
But I can't, uh...
I mean, if you want to just put it up there, you can.
The network and all the stuff down here.
Oh, okay. I'm saying if you want to keep it open, you can put it on the ground to see.
Yeah. This is as far as the cable will go.
Oh, I see, I'm sorry.
We'll get started in just a moment, we have a little technical difficulty here, so... Okay, are we ready?
It'll be about another minute.
Okay.
Yes, you can log back in. I had to log out. Yeah, hit exit. Yeah, you still have the vote control. It was just, I need to get a link to the AV control that was on the Chamber One login.
I guess we're gonna have a lot of trouble during election early with just... Bro communication.
Work normal, this is back to normal, and this should work normal as soon as I'm done with this.
No, I'm trying to get it in my program.
I don't think so.
Yeah. I wish.
Yeah, I just gotta put this URL on here to get the AV control. Yeah, just a second. No, it's, uh, she logs in herself. Vista, no underscore AV. Should be that. Little advice, wiggle the mouse throughout the meeting, I didn't have time to do the settings on this, we don't want it to go to sleep. Don't touch that.
Okay, we'll call this meeting to order, we're very pleased to have you at our Vista City Council and Community Development Commission and Buena Sanitation District meeting. And we'll begin with a roll call.
The record will reflect that all members are present.
Thank you very much, and we're very pleased to have President Jess Martinez of the Vista Stake of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints here to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and offer the invocation, so President Martinez, if you'd please come forward. If you'll all stand and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our dear, kind, and sweet heavenly Father, we're very thankful for this opportunity, Father, to meet in liberty to discuss the affairs of our community. We're very thankful, Father, for this nation and the privileges and the blessings that it bestows upon all those who live here. We thank Thee, Father in heaven, for those that uphold and sustain the Constitution and for those who defend our freedoms and our rights. We pray for them and their families, Father. We pray that the Spirit of the Lord may descend upon them in great measure and always encourage them to abound in good works. We pray at this time for this council that they will be blessed also, to have wisdom and insight so that they can positively affect the general welfare of this community. Father, we pray for Thy blessings to be upon the entire city of Vista, that all its residents may also be inspired to abound in good works. Amen.
Thank you very much. Okay, we did hold a closed session just prior to the city council meeting, and I'd like to ask the city attorney to report on the closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, yes, the closed session was held, no action was taken, there's nothing to be reported from the closed session.
Okay, we have no presentations this evening, so we'll go right straight to... Approval of the agenda. Okay, do we have any additions or deletions from the agenda?
There are no additions or deletions to the agenda. And, except for D one.
And the change on D one is to...
D one is, we're removing it because action was taken last week.
At a special meeting.
At a special meeting on Friday.
Okay, very good, thank you. Okay, now that we've taken care of approval of the agenda, we'll move right on to the oral communications. The first speaker, oral commu-- let me just explain first, oral communications is an opportunity to speak on those items that are not on the agenda tonight, and the speaker will have three minutes to discuss whatever he is bringing forth to the city council. The very first speaker is Philip Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor. My family moved to Vista in 2000 to build a home. We tore up a two-story plan because we discovered it was too expensive to build. Instead, we settled on something smaller, and we were able to afford it, so two-story was torn up. What's this have to do with our new city hall? In 2006, Vista voters approved a $40 million city hall through Proposition L. In 2007, Vista spent $300,000 for a special election to have voters approve Proposition C to save money building city hall. In 2008, the Vista City Council approved a city hall costing $55 million, 15 million more than they promised voters it would cost, and 25 million more than an alternate design, the North County Regional Education Center in San Marcos. 55 million, 25 million dollars, oh, I got it backwards. 55 million, 25 million dollars less, which would you tear up? Washington DC, oh, did, okay, they did not, the city of Vista has not torn up the 55 million dollar plan. No, they ignored the voice of the people who voted for a $40 million city hall, 400, I'm sorry, $40 million city hall. Four city council members said to voters in Vista, "Your vote is not relevant. We will do whatever we darn well please." Washington DC is broken, California is broken, especially the State Supreme Court, and now Vista City Government is broken. They broke their promises on Proposition L and Proposition C. What other promises will Vista City leaders break? Will the sports park that voters approved for 15 million be canceled because of the 15 million dollar cost overrun? I look forward to receiving a written response within 14 calendar days. Thanks for listening, and I'll leave my remarks a copy with you.
Okay, next is David Sheehan.
Thanks for your attention, it's a privilege to be with you, my wife and I love Vista. It's actually my privilege to be here a second time. The last time I was here, the entrance to our mobile home park had been destroyed just twice. It's now been destroyed three times, and marvelous people like Art Brown and his staff have been very helpful to our community. Since there's 104 mobile home units in the park, that represents well over 150 residents, most of whom are actually older than I am. And, uh, and not in good health. The last destruction took out all the electricity in the park, which meant older people in poor health needing electricity for, et cetera, et cetera, were out of, completely out of service. So, I'm not here because I'm upset, but I'm here because I'm, as many, as everyone here is upset about this possible problem. Mr. Brown and his people, after this third very serious problem, put up... Arrows to indicate to sober as well as drunken drivers that there's a serious winding street in this section of North Anza. South Anza, Anza south of Bobier, has double stripes and reflectors. And what we're discussing here is maybe a bucket of paint and maybe 12 reflectors. Someone above Mr. Brown chose to overrule our request, and the impression we got that his staff was going ahead with this additional help to reduce our safety problem. I'm basically through, I thank you for your attention. If I were sitting where you are, I would look at the maturity of the person who made this decision, and maybe review his or her performance record, I think there's a problem here. We're dealing with human beings, there's always gonna be problems. Thanks for your attention.
Okay, sir, back in the back of the room is Mr. Pierce, he's a staff member, have you met with him before? If you go back there, he'll be able to help you, and if not, then we will...
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next is Brett McFarland. I'm sorry, that's McFarland, not McFarland.
Yeah, thank you for your time, the, I wanted to just talk to you, since it's open, about the redevelopment that you guys are gonna be voting on, on the 26th. I think I might be a good source of information for you, I got a young family, I'm running around in Vista as much, you know, that's where I do my shopping, especially with the gas crunch, we try to do our entertainment stuff here. And when we first moved here, and for a while, some of the parts of Vista are a little rough, and what I'm seeing is that's starting to change a little bit. I want to stay in Vista, I like Vista, I'm loyal to Vista, but what happened down at the Grecorian with the redevelopment down there, what a huge difference, we go down there all the time, my kids go down there, friends go down there. If anything like that can come out of this new redevelopment for other parts of Vista, you gotta do it, especially with the gas crunch, because a lot of us who live here, we're staying here, we don't want to go to another city for our lives, we want to stay in Vista. There's other parts of Vista I'm seeing that are really starting to come up in what they're like, and I don't know if they were part of the old redevelopment, but I'm sure you've seen them as you run around and do your shopping too, and it makes a big difference, when you pull in, you got a feeling that you're gonna be safe, you see the sheriffs around, you see nice buildings. I understand that some of the decisions you have to make are gonna be tough, it's not a super rich city, you don't have money just to throw around, but obviously you're making some pretty good decisions, because I'm seeing the lifestyle in here, it's getting better. And I just wanted to let you know that I've noticed it, and there's a lot of people like me with families, want to live here, and we want to stay here, and so just keep up the good work, and I hope you'll pass that redevelopment, and I think that's gonna make a big difference. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Uh, next is Alejandro Sanchez.
Mr. Mayor, city council members, Alejandro Sanchez, 515 Norcito Avenue. First of all, I wanted to make a comment, what I've been observing over the last few days, city employees using all the vehicles of the city of Vista and cruising, and I wondered if, uh, if they pay you for gas, and some of them, they have companions driving with them, and I'm very greatly concerned, you know, that, uh, I don't know if any of you have seen those guys driving the vehicles all over the city? You know, I thought it was the city's property, those vehicles, not for their own personal, you know, needs, to use as many times they want to. The second thing that I wanted to come and address is that I have spoke to Donald Carportone, which is the chief, uh, personal chief from operations of the Vista Unified School District, and I was requesting here to make a whole investigation about the use of facilities in the whole Vista Unified School District. And I asked him to suspend, and I repeat, to suspend any permits for anybody who wanted to use the facilities, due to some findings and some investigation that I conducted, and I find out that there were people coming from other parts of the city and using these facilities without the knowledge of anybody, either from the city or the Vista Unified School District. The third thing is that, uh, I've seen that the city of Vista doesn't open on Fridays, and I asked at least several employees, and I asked them, "Well, seems like you don't need, you don't really need the money, you know, since you don't open on Fridays, then, you know, you only work from Monday to Thursday," and say, "Well, we work overtime." So, I think that that's a big problem here, we're in crisis in the whole city, and I think if everybody's starting their belts, and all the jobs that I've been seeing, and many people losing their houses, I think it's time for the city employees to start, I think, in just to work from Monday to Thursday and not get overtime paid, thank you.
Mr. Sanchez, the city doesn't, uh, the city works every other Friday, and they're open earlier and later in the evening, so that they do work the same number of hours that they would if they worked every single Friday. That's been in place, and is in place in most cities within the, within the North County for several years, but they do work every other Friday, and those, every other day, they open at 7:30 and close at 5:30. So that they do, are open extended periods of time, because, the reason it was done was so that people would have an opportunity to come into the city hall earlier before they went to work, or that they, the city hall would be open after work so that they could come in and do business with the city. And so that's been in place for quite some time. Mr. Lopez, did you have a comment?
I wanted to talk earlier, when the gentleman...
Sorry, I apologize, I missed, sit down.
See, Mr. Mayor, no, I do fully understand that, but, you know, if, uh, if, you know, I will ask you to consider to cut this day off from those employees, maybe they can work only from Monday to Thursday, and I hope not to see you asking the, you know, all these citizens for some money, please stop asking for money, because it seems like you have a lot of money to spend in those employees, you know, for overtime, thank you.
They don't get paid, they don't get paid overtime, Mr. Sanchez. Uh, not hearing, and you don't want to hear. Uh, Mr. Koma, Leonard Koma.
Hi, my name is Lenny Koma, I'm at 10:30 via Riada, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I want to just talk about redevelopment for a second, I'm vice president of operations at Jack in the Box, and prior to that, I was region manager for ExxonMobil for Southern California, Arizona, and Nevada. Now, I mention those titles not because they mean anything, but they've given me the opportunity to work with many councils in the venues of redevelopment. And what I have seen happen in many cities is that they really embrace the idea of redevelopment, and as a result, cities such as Bakersfield, that used to be known as quote-unquote "Armpits of America," have really exploded into some of the nicest communities to live. And I've seen what you've done already with Grecorian and development there, I've seen what you've been doing with just simple things like new traffic signals, new walkways and pathways for citizens to walk, new bike paths, better signaling in changing intersections that it's easier to transition in and out of traffic, and I must applaud you for the work that you've already done. I've seen where gridlock has really hurt the infrastructure for major cities in changing and growing and becoming something great for their citizens. I live in Vista, and I plan on living in Vista, hopefully until I retire, I absolutely love this community, I believe it's one of the most diverse and topographically beautiful communities in North County, and I think that if you will support the redevelopment, you can make this city very attractive to the private sector, which is already looking for places to grow, develop, and invest their capital, as well as for the residents to be happy and fulfilled for a long time in this community. So I just wanted to say a few words in support of the redevelopment, I've seen what a fantastic thing it has been for other communities throughout the United States, and specifically in the West Coast right now, in the markets that I, that I work in, and I really hope to just see these types of things continue to expand in our market, our community, and make this a real attractive place for everyone to live in the future. Thank you again for the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez, this is another opportunity.
Just, do you live here in the city of Vista?
Yeah.
How long have you lived here?
Uh, eight years.
Eight years, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Koma. Okay, that concludes oral communications. And next, we'll go to the consent calendar, these are items that can be approved by a single vote of the city council. I'm gonna have to abstain from item C, number C nine, are there any items that the council would like to pull from the consent calendar, Mr. Campbell?
Mayor, thank you, I'll do it fairly quickly when we get to them, item six, 11, and 13, maybe not so quickly on six.
Six?
11, 13.
11 and 13, okay, are there any other items to be pulled from the agenda, or from the consent calendar? Okay, then could we have a...
I'll go ahead and make a motion for the remainder of the consent calendar.
Okay.
Second.
There's a motion in a second, and again, if they would record an abstention for me on C nine, um, please cast your votes. Whoops, not yet. Looks like we still have a technical difficulty here, would you please now cast your votes? Okay, and the consent calendar is adopted unanimously with the one abstention on C nine. Okay, the first item that was pulled was C six, Mr. Campbell?
Mayor, thank you, I just thought the public ought to know what we are enduring every day, which has a big impact on the public, not necessarily just today, but on an ongoing basis with the state of California's inability to come to a balanced budget. I hear numbers between 15 billion and 17 billion shortfall on that budget, I hear polarization between the parties, yet we're some forty-some days out since the budget should have been passed, and it doesn't seem that they're much closer to a resolution. But the thing, the wind that is bothering me the most is the potential for them to raid city funds, and this will have a very, very damaging effect on an already constrained budget, not only for the city, but for transportation and other areas. The League of California Cities has put out a informational website, which indicates that since 1991, the state has raided and not refunded or repaid $26 million from just the city of Vista alone. And this is just a huge amount of money, but it doesn't seem they have, they still have an appetite for more of our funds, and I thought maybe staff and Mrs. Geldert might give us a little more background on where you see this possibly going and what the impacts might be, and my intent is for the citizens to contact their state legislature if they agree that we have a problem.
Yes, Mayor and Council, we daily, and actually now hourly, are reminded of what the state might do, we have the protection of Proposition 1A, which the voters passed resoundingly a few years ago, and however, we thought that there was protection there, and now that it looks that the legislature is trying to get around that, and to not pay back if, once they enact any type of borrowing. Right now, what they're looking at is, instead of fixing the structural deficit of the state and the underlying problems that they have with their budget, they're again looking to borrowing, and in some, in many cases, if it's redevelopment dollars of just taking. And that's our local monies that go to infrastructure, that redevelopment dollars are our economic engine to revitalize the community as well as to look to the future growth for the state as a whole. And many of the issues that they're looking at, if they do the borrowings under Proposition 1A, the estimate that will come out of our general fund in one fell swoop will be $2.68 million, that's just right off the top, and those are things that we use to, again, to fund public safety, our parks, and our streets. In addition to that, the need would be for their stating is, is that it'd be about three-quarters of a million dollars in redevelopment funds, which are not protected for repayment and could be an ongoing annual payment to the state because of their mismanagement. Proposition 1A was enacted to, and stated that there could be borrowings in a crisis, in a crisis situation, in a crisis to all the cities, the 479 cities that resoundingly supported Proposition 1A, meant an earthquake, something that was devastating, a tsunami, something that really, you know, was going to affect all of us, that we legitimately understood why there would be a need to loan money to the state. Their mismanagement of funds is not what we determined to be a crisis, it's their mismanagement of, and their inability to get, come together and to work together to make sure that they resolve this, their structural deficit, to quit spending, we've had a cut-up the credit card campaign, to not enact new programs, to cut services to new programs, or to even existing programs, which would be difficult for all of us, but that's what we do. We have to balance our budget, and we balance it, and we make sure that we provide the best services we possibly can with the dollars that we have. When those dollars don't come in, we tighten our belts. When those dollars don't come in, we tighten our belts and we reduce some of those service levels. We cut out a number of things across the board. We expect the state to do the same thing. And that's one of the issues that is just so difficult for all 479 cities, all special districts, all counties in this state, that the state is expecting just once again to come back out to us and grab another four to eight billion dollars of the taxpayers' money because they can't resolve their budget problems. I feel very passionate about this and if you need any more information, I'd be happy to provide it.
Mr. Lopez?
One of the things I'd like to ask, on the, on the seven and three-quarters that the state actually takes now with Prop. L., can they touch that half cent?
No, they can't.
Okay.
That's still ours and the one cent out of the seven and three-quarters that comes to us is still ours.
So our capital projects are, are protected through Prop. L.?
Our capital projects are protected as well as they are bonded, so that isn't a debt that we owe, that we are obligated through the half-cent sales tax.
Thank you.
Mayor, Mr. Gronke?
Yes, a follow-up to Mr. Lopez's concern. Prop. L., some of the promise of Prop. L. was to help up the public safety. I know we have some covenant fire stations coming on and I think through a SAFER grant, we're able to, to help man those stations. So this taking will not affect the opening of those stations or the staffing of those stations.
Not at this time because we do have the SAFER grant that's, it's, it's on a declining scale and we have that committed to for the first few years. After that, I'm not quite sure if, depending on if they annually take money from the cities, where we would be. We'll be able to open them-
For the immediate future, we're okay.
For the immediate future, we're okay because we have an obligation on the SAFER grant for the first few years to match those funds and we have money from there. But after, after the first few years, if they continue to take money from the cities, we're, it could be in jeopardy at a later point in time.
And how about, how about the Sheriff's Department? I know there was some, some talk of using some of the money from Prop. L. for reopening the stations, some of the sub-stations we have.
Which we did do and that's not, we're not legally bound to do that anyway.
Okay.
So, but that could be in jeopardy.
So I guess my point is, is if we can try to keep public safety as a priority when these takings are, if they occur?
That's always been a priority. The only reductions that we have made in the past are some of our special details and enhanced programs such as cops deputies.
Okay.
Those are the only reductions we have made. Those, we don't like to make those and since we just re-instituted those, we don't want to, a year ago, we would hate to cut those out again. But again, we would present options to council, which would be on a sliding scale of priorities and needs in the community.
So the best we can hope is try to get the message out to as many people as possible and them to tell the legislators to, to work on their problem?
Work on their problem, to fix their budget and not balance it again on state, on counties and cities and special districts, facts.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Mr. Campbell, did you have any?
Well, just simply, I think the word needs to get to the public that we're, we're doing our best to conserve and operate in a very responsible manner. I think there's, Mrs. Gelder, there are not positions that have not been refilled and things that we're abstaining from doing that in another wise, normal climate we would. Is that true?
That's correct. We have a number of positions we haven't filled and, and held them in advance through attrition. And we have a number of positions that we've listed as provisional, just because we were concerned and did not know what the state would do, as well as the general economy.
Well, we appreciate you and the staff doing your part. I know some cities, I've been told that La Mesa has a half-cent sales tax on the ballot. I think it's half cent, but it could be more.
It's three-quarters of a cent. And El Cajon has a half-cent sales tax measure on.
Half-cent, El Cajon.
There are two cities that have transit occupancy tax, TOT taxes. City of Santee is looking to become a charter city. And once again, National City is defending the one-cent sales tax that they have from repealing, being repealed. So it's obvious that there are a number of cities in San Diego County that are very desperate. All of those sales tax measures are looking to shore up their general funds only. It's not for anything special. It's not to build anything capital. It's just to survive on a day-to-day basis.
And I appreciate your pointing that out because I think the citizens of Vista deserve a vote of appreciation from us for supporting the charter and supporting the Proposition L. so we can move forward with the city. And at the same time, hand in hand with that, you've been operating conservatively, so we have a good position here in spite of what the state may. But if we do get hit with the state is, the numbers you told us of-
That's going to hurt.
It's gonna hurt.
Quite a bit.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Do you want to make a motion?
Certainly, I'd move to approve.
Oh, I'm, no?
I was gonna make a motion, that's all right.
Oh, okay.
Was the motion made? I'm sorry.
Yes.
I'll second it or was it second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes. Okay, and that is unanimous with the emphatic, emphatically unanimous, right?
Yes.
Okay. All right, the next one is item C11, which is the time limit and passenger loading zones on Escondido Avenue. Mr. Campbell, you wanted this one removed?
I don't mean to take much time on this one, but I know when I go into a public building, it may take me 20 minutes to find out where I'm going, let alone having four minutes left to get the business done and get back to my car without perspiring about getting ticketed. So I'd like to see, maybe staff can tell us why 24 is the, is the number as opposed to 36 or 48.
Well, currently, as you know, of course, the zone is a two-hour time limit zone. And with the construction on City Hall beginning this week, of course, all the onsite parking is, or pretty much all of it is gone. So there's some, some business that, that needs to be accomplished at the city that really does take much shorter than two hours. Like maybe the people from other departments that are off-site that need to pick up mail or, you know, pick up maybe something that, you know, a project they're working on that they just need to pick up some materials or something like that, that would take a much shorter time span than 24, or two hours. And that's why we selected the 24 minutes, which is what's allowed in the municipal code.
Are you allowed? Any other number than 24?
24 minutes, one hour, and two hour. That's what the municipal code allows.
That seems awfully restrictive.
Join our world.
Pardon me?
Join our world.
Well, maybe the attorney can. Is there any wiggle room on that, sir?
I'd like Mr. Johnson to address the rationale behind the parking issue.
Sure. I'd be happy to. One of the things that we looked at is we have 20 parking spaces for the public that is located off of Alta Vista. We also have six two-hour parking spaces on Escondido still. That'll be for public use only. So there's 20, 27 parking spaces in total for the public. So what we were thinking is that these six spaces that are 24-minute spaces would be primary, it could be for the public, but it'd be primarily for city employees that had to come into the city. We have about 15 to 20 different departments and divisions that have to come into the city on a daily basis to pick up mail and make drop-offs and things like that. So we thought, we felt that 24 minutes would accommodate them. And with having approximately 25 to 27 spaces open for the public, that would accommodate them as well during normal business hours.
All right, I think then I understand the issue far better, but possibly we could ask staff to look into some signings that would be citizen-friendly as to where they can find these, these parking spaces.
I think that'd be a good idea.
Because I think a lot of people are, you know, driving around, not quite sure what they can do, where they can go, and how long they can park. So I, now I understand.
Sure. And we did put up a sign. It's above the monument sign on the corner of Eucalyptus and Escondido that says the public parking's off of Alta Vista. And we have ordered another sign that'll be at the corner of Alta Vista and Escondido, letting people know that the building, or the Alta Vista parking lot is where public parking should be.
Thank you.
A move for approval.
Okay, do we-
Mr. Lopez?
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes. And that passes unanimously. All right, let's go to C13, North Santa Fe Avenue and South Melrose Drive Traffic Signal Interconnect. Mr. Campbell?
And that was a clarification. I'm sure Mr. Pierce can do it in a heartbeat. There's a reference to synchronization. I know you, you've done a good job of educating us on the difference between coordination and synchronization. Is this truly a synchronization project or is it a coordination project?
It's a coordination project.
Okay, as, as the staff report refers to synchronizing.
Yes, because the grant referred it to as synchronization.
So we'll be coordinating the-
We'll be coordinating the signals, the same method that we have been doing all over town, yes.
Okay.
We do not have the grid layout like I keep reminding everyone of the synchronization.
Why don't we have a grid layout?
Make me king for a day.
Hostlaid didn't do it to his avocado groves. I understand that completely. All right. Is there any other comment on this? Would you like to make a motion?
I'd move for approval.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes. Just a side note, I remember the very first Rotary Meeting I went to, this guy came up to me and said, "I'm Charlie Hostlaid and you're gonna hate me." I said, "Why am I gonna hate you?" And he said, "Because I'm responsible for all these crooked roads here in Vista." Because they were pathways to my avocado groves that he managed. Okay, that takes care of the consent calendar. The next item would be D2, which is the Agreement for Administration of the Vistins Revitalizing Our Community Project, or Vistins Rock.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Bill Rawlings, Director of Redevelopment and Housing. And tonight we have a very short presentation from Kathy Valdez.
Thank you.
Evening, Mayor and Council. The agenda item before you is for contract services for the 10th Annual Vistins Rock. For the past eight years, the city has contracted with Vista Townsite Community Partnership to serve as a lead agency for this event, which includes outreach in identified community, volunteer recruitment, and serving as a spokesperson for that project. There's, this year's event will take place on October 4th and it's taking place in a sort of loop of streets off of Santa Clara Drive. They include Hackmore Drive, Yacon Street, Yacon Circle, Nash Lane, and Calusa Way. There is home to numerous seniors, many of whom have lived there since the houses were built, as well as many working families. At this time, I'll entertain any questions you may have about the event.
Are there any questions about Vistins Rock this coming year?
A comment?
Any comments? Mr. Campbell?
I just think this is the greatest thing since sliced bread. It benefits people. It brings up the self-esteem of the neighborhood. It just improves values. And I can't help but think there's just an ongoing effect that everybody should be very proud of the effort. How many houses have been impacted by this project since its inception? Would you say, how many years have we done this?
Lot of houses.
Nine. It's, we have approximately 233 houses, approximately.
Approximately, yeah. Well, it cleans up neighborhoods. It just is the greatest thing. And the fact that people from all over the community and businesses get together to do something really of this tangible an effort is to be thanked.
Good. Mr. Gronke?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to continue along with Mr. Campbell saying it's a great event. It's a great thing for our city. We were doing the National Night Out Walk the other, the other night and as we walked through the neighborhood, I could just almost point out all the different houses that we had touched upon and the improvements we had made. So thank you for doing, for putting this all together. Really, it's a great program. And with that, I'll go ahead and make a motion on this.
We have one more speaker, Mr. Lopez. Then I'll come back to you.
A good thing that the Rock brings is that a lot of organizations, soccer teams, baseball teams, the young, the young children, the young students and young folks come out and, and really take a sense of pride in their community and helping. And it's very educational for them and, and that's what we need. Things like that we need to, to continue to educate the folks of our community. It's a great program.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Do you want to go ahead and make, I did, Mr. Campbell, do you have another comment? Okay, Mr. Gronke, would you like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion and then Mayor.
Okay, and do we have a second?
I'll second. I agree with everyone.
Okay, very good. Let's all cast our votes then. And again, that's unanimous. That's, it is a good program and we're very fortunate to have it in the community. Okay, the next item is item D3, which is a Redevelopment Plan Amendment, resetting the base year, adoption of owner participation rules, and method of relocation. Mr. Rawls?
Yes, Mayor and Council. Bill Rawlings, Redevelopment Housing again. And tonight, Mr. Zinnor from Redevelopment will give us a little bit longer presentation, but we've tried to keep it short.
Thank you, Mr. Zinnor.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. Since late last year, we've been working towards approval of Amendment Number Four to the Vista Redevelopment Plan. The proposed Redevelopment Plan Amendment is intended to provide the city with means, with greater means to address many of the community's needs and to improve the Vista community. Specifically, the amendment is intended to allow the city to use redevelopment funds to assist in addressing infrastructure needs in residential neighborhoods and also to enhance the city's commercial corridors to attract amenities that the city currently lacks. To use Mr. Rawlings' favorite example, one of the things we'd like to see attracted to Vista is a bookstore. That's just one example of things that the community could use. Since throughout this process, eminent domain has been a very prominent issue, it's important to restate that the existing redevelopment plan and the proposed amendment do not allow the city to use eminent domain to acquire residentially-zoned property. Furthermore, state law, through the passage of Proposition 99, now provides further protection to homeowners by prohibiting the use of eminent domain to acquire owner-occupied homes regardless of zoning. So there's two levels of protection for property owners in the redevelopment plan. Tonight, you're being asked to consider two resolutions related to the proposed amendment. The first resolution would reset the base year from fiscal year 2007, 2008 to fiscal year 2008, 2009. The significance of setting the base year is that future tax increment revenues to the commission are calculated against the property taxes generated from the base year's equalized assessment rules. This sets the foundation for future revenues to the commission, which are based on tax revenues above those established in the base year. The second resolution would adopt the commission's current owner participation rules and method of relocation to include the proposed amendment area. The purpose of the owner participation rules is to establish a process by which property owners and businesses within the project area are given an opportunity to participate in the redevelopment project. The purpose of the method of relocation is to establish a method for addressing the needs of persons, families, and businesses who might be displaced by redevelopment. In general, the state relocation guidelines would require that the commission find replacement housing or a replacement business location, make up for any difference in housing costs, pay for moving expenses, and also pay for, for business re-establishment expenses. The commission is required to adopt a method of relocation irrespective of whether or not any displacement is anticipated. Relocation requirements are also triggered regardless of how a property is acquired. So even if the agency, the commission, acquires a property through a negotiated sale, we would still be liable to pay for relocation expenses. The current owner participation rules and method of relocation were actually first adopted in 1987 as part of the original redevelopment plan, and they've been used effectively since that time. In closing, staff recommends adoption of the proposed resolutions as necessary actions in the plan amendment process. Approval of the proposed Amendment Number Four to the redevelopment plan is not a part of today's recommendation and will be considered by the City Council and the Community Development Commission at a joint public hearing to be held on August 26th. That concludes my report. Mr. Rawlings and I are available to answer any of your questions. Thank you.
Are there any council questions? Mr. Gronke?
Yes, just a couple. First of all, you asked that we extend the, the base year. Why would we do such a thing? Why, why do we want to extend it a couple of years?
Well, by-
Into a couple of years.
By establishing the base year, what we're doing is we're setting the time period by which future tax increment will be based from. So by setting it at the, the proposal, to set it at this current year upcoming, that sets the floor for all future tax increment accrual.
Okay. And so, what's established right now?
I'm sorry?
What is established right now at, what year?
The, well, the original redevelopment area is based on the 87 Act. This would, we're talking about the proposed area. The proposed area would then be set in, at 08, 09.
Setting up for the proposed area, okay. And describe how a, a commercial property owner might be able to participate- And describe how a, a commercial property owner might be able to participate in redevelopment.
One example would be, there's a, an area in the city that is prime for redevelopment. A developer would like to develop there. The city agrees that it would be a good place to develop, and there would be some preliminary analysis that would go forward to reach that point. And if in fact, there was a decision made that this is something that could work and be a positive addition for the city, the city would then approach the property owners in that area and say, "Here's what we're thinking about doing. Here's what a private developer is thinking about doing, and would you like to participate in that?" And the participation could take the form of, "Sure, I'll sell my property and I'm moving down the street." Or it could be, "I don't want to sell my property, I want to continue to operate here as part of the new development." It could be, "I will, I'd like to lease, I'll sell you my land, but I want to lease space back, and I could go on all night with permutations of participation." But the overall goal is what's key, I think, and the key, of course, is to involve existing community members, in this case, businesses, with the development process in a positive way.
So what often happens is a business is bought up, redevelopment occurs, a new business is put in there, and then the tax base goes up from those years. But if somebody wanted to maintain their location, they could probably sell that location and then lease back and keep their business in that same location. So people, so their customer base would know exactly where to find them.
That's certainly an option, yes.
Okay, good, good. And as I look over the new map, and I know we've talked about this before, but the expansion into the residential areas is a benefit to the residents because many of the infrastructure needs of those particular areas will be met then through redevelopment dollars.
Yes, there's, there's two reasons that we're proposing the plan amendment. One is to help us revitalize commercial corridors. The other one, which is not related to redevelopment of commercial corridors, the residential area is specifically designed to help us or to allow us to spend redevelopment dollars in those areas to make specific infrastructure improvements. And so, the reason that we've, we've proposed to include the residential areas is to allow us to make improvements, for example, sidewalks, lighting, street improvements, those types of things.
And the timelines, if we, if we move the new baseline to 2009, the timelines for the finalization of making those improvements would be 2027, is that right? Or something like that?
Well, the, the plan would, the plan and the proposed era would run to 2038.
2038.
And the, but the, our goal would be to make the improvements much sooner, of course. And if the, if the areas are included, then that would allow us to spend existing redevelopment dollars that we're already collecting in those areas.
I guess, the reason I ask that question is because there might be residents out there and saying, "Okay, we just got into the redevelopment area. When are we going to get to see these improvements?" They may not happen immediately.
They may not happen immediately, but the idea would be to have them happen sooner than they otherwise would if they were not in the redevelopment area.
So, really, this, with our general fund, restricted as it is through state takings and us trying to maintain all the different services and stuff we have available right now within our city, it's difficult for us to do some street improvements. Redevelopment would give us a better opportunity to make those.
Yes, that's true.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Mr. Lopez?
Thank you, Mayor. To answer your question, Mr. Gronky, if I owned the land in redevelopment area, I owned a business, and if it was free and clear, why would I, why would I want to go back in there and pay $3 a foot for it? Difficult. Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Campbell?
Mayor, thank you. I was following up on Mr. Gronky's question regarding relocation versus participation. Possibly you could give us an example, and I think I'll, I'll start with one, and that would be where the Corcoran Theater complex is. We had a Burger King located in that area, and the redevelopment agency, working with that company, helped them relocate within the project area, or that project, because that's where people were familiar and finding them. Now, also in that area was a concrete bash plant. Why would you not choose to leave it there? I know the answer, but I'm sorry.
Then why are you asking the question?
I don't want any, anyone of the business or the like to not understand, there has to be some compatibility with the overall program, and we have to have similar uses within an area, and something that would be dissonant to the success of the project would not receive that participation treatment, most likely.
I agree with your statement. Yes, that's, that is the case, yes.
But you might have to really work with them for relocation in that case.
I, I think that the, we have both of, the reason we have both of these tools, that is owner participation and relocation assistance, is to allow us to find the best fit for the business or the occupants that is also in keeping with our overall redevelopment plans for the benefit of the city.
That's all I was trying to get clarified. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Any other comments or questions from the council? Would someone like to make a motion? Okay, and a second?
I'll second it, Mayor, and I failed to make the comment that I'm glad that the Bonds Shopping Center is being included now because I think that's really going to be a benefit to South Santa Fe.
Yes, that's very good.
Mayor, if I may, I'm going to abstain on this because I, I just don't want any taint on the, on the, I own property within what may be the redevelopment expansion area, and I don't want to be part of this.
Okay, would the rest of you please cast your votes?
That doesn't include me, does it?
No, it's an expansion area.
No, it doesn't, Mr. Lopez?
Only in the expansion area. Okay, thank you.
Okay, please cast your votes. Okay, and that passes with Ford, and Mr. Campbell is abstaining. Okay, the next item on the agenda is item D4. It's the 2008 Sewer Master Plan Update and Program Environmental Impact Report.
Excuse me. Okay, there we go. Good evening, Mayor, Council. We're here to talk about the 2008 Sewer Master Plan Update and the piece that matches it, the Program Environmental Impact Report. Okay. For some background, we are responsible as the agencies for the maintenance, the operation, and the management of two sewer districts, the city and Buena Vista Sanitation District, Buena Sanitation District. And as a result, we've been, we've been through this process before, being a long-term sanitation district. And the last Sewer Master Plan Update was adopted in 2003, along with an EIR that went along with that. Since that time, the state has invoked some new state discharge requirements. The old requirements was referred to as 9604, the new requirements are 200701. As part of those new sewer state discharge requirements, we are obligated to update our sewer master plan to stay in compliance with those regulations, and that's what we have been doing. The first component that we're going to talk about tonight is the Sewer Master Plan Update. It evaluated both the city and the Buena District systems. There, as you can see on the slide, there's almost 8,000 pipe segments that were evaluated. We evaluated them for flow capacity, we evaluated them for age, condition, in other words, the type of pipe that is in it. And because of the Buena Vista spill, we did an extensive look at where we have ductile iron pipe in the system and the age of that pipe. It projects the capacity out to 2027, so we are at build-out at 2027. So that was the basis behind all of the flow calculations. And as a result of this work, the sewer rate increases that were approved in January 2008, this was the basis of that program that you adopted in January. And it will also be the basis of the upcoming connection fee adjustment that we will be bringing before you later this year. So let's talk about the sewer projects. The master plan identifies all of the projects and recommends in a prioritized order of the projects that need to be done for capacity projects as well as non-capacity projects. Non-capacity projects would be the removing of the ductile iron pipes, the age-related and the condition-related projects. The capacity projects would be projects that we would be increasing the size of the pipeline. The first step into doing that prioritization is doing CCTV, closed-circuit TV inspection. And there's, we have a combined system length of about 200, or 310 miles. We have already commenced that work, and we will be, we're expecting to be completed by April next year. That means we will have all of the system videoed by that time. That doesn't mean that we will wait until April 2009 next year to get all the videos in. We are getting videos in, and we're starting to getting, getting the assessment in right now. And as we go through the rest of this next few months, we will be starting to develop, where are we going to, what's the projects? And we've already looked at the entire system to where we think the worst parts of the system are, and that's what we're videoing right now. So these will give us a final prioritization for all of the CIP projects that we will look at doing at least for the next five years. Just a little glance here, then and now. George Solana was very gracious in giving us this old picture, and I don't know where he got it, but he says it's 1950s vintage. And as you see in the bottom right-hand corner, this is our CC video truck that is one of four trucks that are out there currently videoing the system right now. We have three consultants' trucks and our own video truck. The second component that we want to talk about tonight is the Program Environmental Impact Report. The Program Environmental Impact Report was prepared in accordance with the CEQA requirements. And it first goes through and describes the entire situation, or the system, our wastewater system. It lists all of the projects that are listed in our master plan. It has analyzed the environmental impact, has determined the required mitigation measures that were going to be required to take on. And some of the projects may require additional analyzing of the situation for implementation. In other words, when we get into a, and the most likely place we're going to get into it is we've got a trunk sewer that was placed in an environmental-sensitive habitat, a creek area, because it's the lowest area. We're going to have to relocate that. So we're going to have to probably do some additional environmental work later down the line to work those projects and get the impacts determined. So what we've got from the environmental impact, we've got now a standard for design features, construction methods, mitigation measures that we're going to have to take on for every project that we do. The EIR also identified some potentially significant unmitorable impacts to aesthetics, biology, hydrology, and water quality. Those impacts will be assigned as we get into these further analysis of some of the tougher areas. So that's something that we will have to be looking at as we get into some of the projects. The environmental review process, we started when we finished the master plan about this time last year, and it's taken us almost a year to get through it. As you can see, we've spent from July last year till June this year. We've taken all of the proper steps to walk through the CEQA, all of the reviews. We even did an independent third-party review by a recommended consultant out of the state of New York to look at both the environmental impact report and the sewer master plan update. And we've got, we had, except for a couple small questions, we got a glowing review. And now that we've got the final EIR before you. Let's talk about sewer program because that's the next, the next step. We have a program status, our program schedule, that we have set the programs out for the next five years in sequence. We know how much we need, how much money we're going to need to do, how much staffing, what's the impact, and all of that. As we've done the schedule, that's allowed us to start some of the initial bonding process to figure out when we're going to need to put the bonds on the market, how much of the bonds we're going to need to be, how much reserves do we have, where are the monies that we have, or the cash reserves that we have. And we've been able to, we're starting down through that process. Engineering, as I've talked about earlier, we've already started the CCTV work, and we've already started on several of the projects that were already in CIP or already had funds assigned to them. So those projects are cleared, and we're continuing to move on those projects. The sewer program funding. This, these numbers that you see here are the required funding for Vista at $89.5 million. This is for the first five years, and this is what we don't have in our pocket that we will have to be bonding for. You also see the Buena Sanitation District at $21 million is what we'll be expecting to spend in the next five years. So, staff recommends that the program EIR for the city and the Buena Sanitation District be certified, and that we're asking your approval on the 2008 Sewer Master Plan Update for the city and the Buena Sanitation District. And that concludes my report.
I have just one question, and that is, is that with the completion of this update, this does not indicate a direction of staff to come back to the council for another sewer rate increase, does it?
No, it does not.
Okay, Mr. Campbell?
Thank you, Mayor. You show the figures that are needed for work through 2012. Give us sort of a outgoing view of what, because your plan's for 2027. What more do you anticipate you may need to complete the work? And when will we know that? I guess I'm looking at the other shoe-dropping issue.
The answer to that question is, we're going to work through about the $110 million plus because we've got money already assigned. And we are going to start working down through this menu of projects. We've got projects, some are capacity, that are slated, that are specific projects. A lot of them, we will be picking up and improving, and improving our focus on as we get the CCTV done. Because we had to make some assumptions during the, the master plan update based on information we had. And now, as we get all of the information in to look at all of the systems, we're going to have a much better idea. We took a very conservative approach, so these numbers are based on a very conservative approach. And as we get our CCTV in, in this next year, we will have a much better idea of how much we actually have to do in this first five years. What we don't get done in there, and there are capacity projects and the same kind of projects that are out even beyond the five years, which we will have to come back to you in about a five-year time. Because in this five-year time, we will expend the money that was part of the rate increase that was approved in January. So we will need more money then, but at this time, I don't have a firm. I've got some large numbers that are out there. You know, there's probably another $60 to $80 million worth of work out there. And I'm a little hesitant to say too much more than that because you start talking about future dollars and current dollars and--
Oh, indeed. I wasn't of the impression it would be a small number. I just thought it'd be nice if you could sort of gauge a ballpark. But there's more to do, and it's going to require more money going forward. But this is the, the kind of monies we'll need in order to achieve our goals by 2012.
That's correct.
Is that basically correct? Tell us about technology. From time to time, we've heard about socks or sleeves being blown through, and they, they become catalyzed and create a new pipe inside a pipe, which I understand actually sometimes improves flow rate. Others, we see advertised on TV, or these epoxy things, which I'm not sure are the best solution. But what is technology doing for us that'll help us constrain costs and retain some of the lines we have?
One of the things that we will be looking at is the lining projects. There are several different kinds of lining out there, all varying in the different types of what I call kickoff. How do they get the material to harden? Everything from cold water to infrared to ultraviolet. And we can literally pull socks through large lines, small lines. And what those material does is it actually becomes a hard substance inside the pipe, adhered to the pipe, but it is as strong as the host pipe, the outside pipe. And the host pipe can go away, and we will still have this liner involved in-- And the host pipe can go away, and we will still have this liner involved and have our pipe in place. That is the most, one of the most economical things that we can do. Because we're not cutting the streets up and doing all the trenching and all of that, as you can imagine, all of that effort, which requires time and money. And if we can pull through large sections of pipe that are just cracked, not deformed, not caved in, or displaced joints, we can repair our system relatively cheaply. And that's what I've, I've been talking to, one of my counterparts at the city of San Diego, and they have been doing several hundred miles of lining a year, and doing the same kind of practice that we're going to start and continue on. And the consultant that we have doing the CCTV is the same consultant they have filming their system, and the packages that they turn in for the assessment, they're able to turn right around in a relatively short time, in a few months, we put a package out on the street. So that reduces our design time down greatly, so that we can get more work done, we can package projects together. And it's something that we have the least amount of disruption on the surface and the least amount of disruption to traffic. There's some other technologies that are out there that we may look at determining what the type of soil is, is there's some pipe bursting out there where we actually pull vibrating heads through the pipe, it bursts the pipe literally apart, and right behind it, it's pulling in a new pipe right behind it. Those take what they call jacking and receiving pits, so there's usually a fairly large hole in the ground and a long section of pipe that will be strung out. So there's some staging issues there. If we need to upsize and we can't disrupt the surface, that's another potential. Our last resort is going to be to tear up the street. In some places, like I talked about earlier, on a capacity project that we want to relocate the line out of a sensitive habitat area, then we're gonna be tearing up and digging an open trench work.
And so you factored these technologies into your plan?
Yes.
Good. Thank you.
Mr. Grunkie?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I sat on this council when we voted on the last sewer increase back in 2003, and since that time, it appears that the state has probably come back with additional recommendations and enhancements on requirements?
They keep screwing the lid down, yes.
Okay. And have they passed along money to allow for these new enhancements, or?
No, they have not.
I guess it's just another unfunded mandate in a way, then?
It's one way you could look at it.
Okay. When we talk about that ductile iron piping, similar to what happened at the sewer spill, and you talked about replacing some of it, is it because you, after you do this videotaping it, you'll determine exactly what extent you'll replace that type of pipe?
We may replace it, because it may be so deteriorated on the inside that we cannot line it. If we can line it, then we can line, pull a line through it, and the liner will be stronger than the actual pipe. So the ductile iron pipe can literally go away, melt away, rust away, whatever you want to call it. And we can, we'll have a complete system at that point.
The videotaping occurs on the inside of it, though. Wasn't there a leak from the outside on that particular case?
And that's, and that's one of the hardest, or one of the biggest difficulties we have with the ductile iron pipe. Because ductile iron pipe can be in several different forms when we see it out in the field. It can be what we call cement lined, which was the same kind of pipe that we had down that blew out. If we could've got a line, or a camera in that line, it would've looked fine, probably up to the day that it burst, because the only thing that you would see on the video would be this cement lining. You couldn't tell how thick the outside metal part was. There is no technology out there. We've looked at the oil and gas industry, we've looked at oil and gas transmission industry, there is no technology that we can pull down a pipe and it'll tell us the thickness of that outside diameter pipe. So we've got some choices. We've got, we've got one, a pressure line, that's a ductile iron line, partially ductile iron line. That one we will most likely replace and just remove that pipe, because it's a pressure line. The other gravity ones, the option is there to line those pipes, or we will replace them.
Okay. Okay, so the ones that are true pump lines, like that one was, you still have an opportunity to look inside of them?
The force mains are very difficult to look inside, and that's one of the reasons why on the force main that we have left, we will probably just flat replace it in the sections that we have ductile iron, because we cannot get a camera in there. There's no such thing as a low flow time. That line runs plumb full, it's like, it's like a pressure water pipe.
You don't line those, then?
Right.
You don't line, okay, you just replace them. You showed in a video that we had a truck, or four trucks?
There's actually, yes.
Is that one of four, you said?
Yeah, the city of Vista truck is our truck. We own that truck. There are three other trucks, very similar to this, that are owned by consultants, that are out on our streets doing video of the sewers, just like this, our crews are.
We're leasing their time until we get the whole project done.
That's right.
Okay, okay. And I understand that not only is this, is the state getting a little more demanding in the requirements, but also if we don't meet those requirements, the fining component gets a little bit more harsh. Is that true, too?
There are fines, just like what we're dealing with from the Buena Vista lagoon spill, that those fines can be anything from what has been in the history of the board here, regional board, of 10 cents a gallon, to the maximum extent of $10 a gallon.
$10 a gallon?
$10 a gallon for every gallon of sewage that's put on the ground.
So it could go into well over $10 million?
Well, in the case of the Buena Vista, it could be $73 million.
Did we get $73 million from this last go-around one?
No, we did not.
Would we do a third-party investigation? Was that to our benefit?
Oh, the third-party review, the independent review of the master plan and the environmental impact report. One of the things that we were concerned about was that we got too focused and may not see everything. So it was recommended to us that here's an individual that has reviewed a lot of environmental impact reports for sewer master plans, as well as sewer master plans. So it was, it was a second set of eyes to look at everything and to make sure that we had caught everything in the whole process. Because this is a very long process, this has been almost a two-year process to, once we started the sewer master plan till tonight, when we're finishing the EIR. So we wanted to make sure we had made all of the commitments that we needed to make, we had got all of the agency approvals that we needed to, that everything in the sewer master plan, we had done the right kind of analysis. We wanted a second pair of eyes to look at that.
And it wasn't a major cost to us, was it?
No, it was not.
Okay, okay. Last question, it deals with the bonding. You said that we need $90 million for the city and $21 for Buena. In this economic time, I understand that money's hard to get. Is this gonna hurt us? Is this gonna make this more costly than it might've been six months ago, a year ago?
Well, as far as the bonding, and that's one of the things that we're trying to do right now, is we're, as we're focusing and getting these projects focused, we're getting cost on our projects, so now we can start adding up the totals. And one of the things that, let's see if Mr. Gardner was gonna come up.
Mr. Gardner is in the back, and I think that one of the things is that it truly is, yes, as far as bond issuance, that's going to cost us more. And are we going to have insurance agencies to back our bonds? They've pretty much gone bust, and so there's going to be difficulty placing these bonds. But as far as the ones that have truly held up, have been municipal bonds, and so they have, we're optimistic, and we're just going to look and see what the market is. I don't know if Mr. Gardner has anything else to add, but I think that that's, that's where we are, we're going to see, is it's going to cost us a little bit more to issue bonds. But as far as the work is, I think we've estimated that as best as we can, the issuance price will probably be a little costly.
So it's a secure revenue base, because it's a tax base, but at the same time, the larger market's looking at any bonding saying?
Any bonding's gonna be difficult.
Any bonding's gonna be difficult. Tom Gardner, Finance Director, good evening, members of the council. Sewer bonds are, have been around a long time, and they're one of the most standard things that municipalities do. So from that standpoint, we have a pool of buyers that would like to invest in them. You know, we're hoping by December or January, that especially the insurance portion of the bond issuance gets settled out in terms of the marketplace. We are concerned that as we go from, you know, December to next summer, that the cost itself will go up as interest rates go up. So, you know, how much we're able to afford and when we need it is part of our planning process, and you may go out for a series of them, or more than one of them over the next five years.
Okay. So again, you're probably, you're not gonna do all of them 90 million at one time?
No.
Okay. Mrs. Ritter?
Actually, Mr. Pierce answered a lot of my questions. I was questioning about the corrosive soil and how, how we would know if we checked the inside of the pipes, you know, if it was gonna be corrosive soil, how we would know, which you answered that. If we line the pipes, does that diminish the capacity of the pipes? There's really thin material.
You want me to talk to you in engineerese?
No. Just people talk.
The simple, simple way to look at it is, the pipe, as a clay pipe, has a certain smoothness inside it. The liner that we pull in it is kind of like taking a, you know, kind of a clay jar or clay pot that you have, you know how rough that is? And we pull in kind of a fiberglass lining, so as you can, it's a lot slicker, it's a more closed cell. So it's like pulling a glass liner inside it. So even though we reduce the diameter slightly, we've increased the flow value, so we can push more through it, because it's smoother.
Okay, that's, that's a good answer. And then I had another, on the force mains, okay, so if we replace them, then as they age, how are we going to tell if they're, you know, like, so we aren't gonna have another spill, how are we telling, as they age, are we gonna put the new ones in and then line them also, so that in the future we don't have a problem, or we just trust that? Because these were not, these were not aged, the ones that we had the failure on.
No, the ones that we had the failure on were actually at about half their estimated life. And we could, we could've built those lines in that, with the same standard right now. The standard has not changed. But what we're going to do, as well as what's being done at Buena force mains, is we're gonna probably use a non-corrosive pipe. So there's gonna be very little chance, it's gonna be basically an inert pipe, it's gonna be continuously jointed, it's welded together, so there's no joints. It's a little thicker wall, it's made out of plastic, so it's gonna, there shouldn't be anything that attacks that. But to answer your question, the difficulty in a force main and trying to understand what's going on inside of it is literally getting inside of it, because that force main runs, like I said earlier, it runs full, just like a water pipe, all the time. We don't have the chance of sticking a camera in it in the middle of the night when there's no flow in it. When that line is running, it's running full, and it's the only line that we have. So those are, those are the dilemmas that we've always had with force mains, and what we try to use is the highest quality material and the best construction methods that we can put that pipe in, and then we continually monitor it.
The best we can.
The best we can, that's right.
Okay. And then the other thing I was gonna say is, on the bonds, it'll cost us more maybe in the beginning, but hopefully it'll save us from having any spills, because we'll replace things in the future, so that'll save us some money and that, because the next time, they won't be quite so nice to us as they're gonna be.
That's exactly right.
Not that they're nice this time, but that they won't be quite so nice the next time.
And that's, and that's really what the real premise of this whole master plan is, is to step up and fix our sewer system the way it needs to be repaired, because it's only gonna last so long. And that's what this commitment's doing here, is we're starting down that path.
Okay, well, that's all my questions, if any.
Mr. Lopez?
Thank you. The force main is full all the time. In your opinion, with our, when we completely maximize, let's say, 20, 20 years from now, will that be sufficient?
We will, we are sizing our lines for build-out at 2027. So the size of the line will be the right size, at what we project to be at that time.
Your present line at that time will be sufficient? Your present line?
Yes. Well, I don't know. We'll, we'll be doing that analysis as we look at that line. I don't remember right off the top of my head if that's being upsized or not.
In your opinion, if you sleeve the entire distance of your, of your force line, is, what would it cost? Do you have any idea?
It's relative, well, what we're doing is, we're looking at, using an expensive line, a very, pretty expensive liner, but we're saving a lot more in doing the open trench and the open excavation and the backfill and the repair of the street and all of that.
Your opinion, what would it cost?
In a generality, we may save...
Now, what would it cost to sleeve it?
Maybe 50%, of the cost.
50%?
Of, versus open trenching it and replacing it by sleeving it?
That's all?
It could be, it could be down in that area, maybe 50%.
It seems like it would cost less to sleeve than to, 50% of, if you opened it up, it's only 50, you're only saving 50%?
I mean, this, very general, but again, we're using some fairly expensive material and some very expensive technology.
So roughly, how many, how much would it cost to sleeve that, that, just that section between, from the pump out to where you're pumping?
Oh, I...
The actual one, or there's the pressure one?
Yeah, I don't, it's, the force main, I believe, in $2,006 was about $800 or $900,000 worth of work. And that's actually, I believe, a replacement cost. We're not gonna sleeve that force main.
You're not gonna sleeve that?
They said it wasn't economically feasible, I was just there for a second, when the experts said it wasn't feasible, but they said that if we would do it, it would be about that, and then a replacement was a million and a half. And so it was more than 50%, I mean, less, yeah, a little bit more than 50% of a replacement cost, but they, any expert said they did not recommend that at all for that line, so...
Well, what I see is that if you, if we have to pay a million-something now for a break that we just had, wouldn't it be better to pay to sleeve it today and not have another spill? And because our next spill will not be a million-something, it will be a lot more. So in the long run, it's cheaper to sleeve today than, than pay the heavy penalties that that main, because the possibility of it breaking again is very positive, that it will break again in the near future, because if you have one now, you will have some more tomorrow. So it seems like it would be a lot cheaper today to sleeve and not have the problem of being sued over the spillage, and to play safer, to play a safe, wouldn't it be better to do that today?
It would, except that if you, you have to shut the entire line down, we don't have any ability to shut the entire line down, because you have no place to send the sewer. So what the plan is, is to build a parallel line?
Yes.
And then sleeve, you know, and then either sleeve...
Off and then sleeve?
Yeah, and so that's what we're going to do, so there'll be two lines there. But one of the things is, is that, is that you can't just do one. And so we would love to do that, that's why we just need to build a parallel line as fast as we can. Decide whether to sleeve or replace in the other line, and that's, that's okay, that's a decision to be made, but you'll have two operational lines, but for the short period of time in between, we, I mean, we need to just build the other line, the parallel line as quickly as we can.
And that, and we've met just last week with Carlsbad, and we have, we're finaling the pre-design report, and what we will be doing is, we will be sleeving the line that blew out. There is some restrictions to that, because that line is over almost 4,000 feet long with no access points in it, which means that we can only pull about 1,000 to 1,300 feet with sleeving. So we've got to excavate down to the line to be able to get access to it, so we can have pull points. The other line will be placed beside it, it'll be the same size, both of those lines will run simultaneously. And what those, both those lines will have is enough capacity to get us and Carlsbad out to 2027, before anything else needs to be done.
When was the last time we did this master plan?
2003.
2003. And prior to that, when did we do the master plan?
It was 20 years prior to that, we did a five-year update, so we could, we could get through to our sewer rates at this point in time, but it was... get through to our sewer rates at this point in time, but it was a full-blown, complete master plan was 20 years prior to that. It was 1983. Then we had, we had an update in 2003 to get us a five-year rate plan, and then we knew we needed to do, we're coinciding all of our plans now, that's why we're doing our general plan update, all of our elements, all, everything, our traffic, you know, everything is going to be done within a two-year timeframe. We will have, you know, general plan, all our sewer master plan, all of them, and then they will also have incrementally the update periods after that, so we won't have to go back and reinvent each one in this time because this has taken us a few years to do the full-blown 20-year master plan.
So there was a 20-year period that we didn't do anything at all?
We did not do the five-year updates as we should have. That is correct. And we're on track now to do those.
Maybe if we had done it, we have, went to the, to the time to do it at that time, maybe we could have figured out the costs and maybe we could have done something back then, and we wouldn't have the problems we have today.
The sewer master plan really did not, it does not coincide necessarily with your rates. We had taken rate adjustments to the council.
Not the rates, I mean the, the replacement and all the problems that we do have today.
Not, no, not necessarily.
Replacements took place during this period of time.
No, we did, we had replacements.
We did replacements and did all of that.
You have been doing replacements ever since?
Absolutely. The sewer master plan is just a document to work off of, just like your general plan, that you would hope that you would make sure that...
There's nothing to do with that.
It doesn't have anything to do with our replacements or our rates. We'd brought replacements before it, and we had capital improvement programs. It's just, it's a working document that is issued with planning 20 years out for build-out, for new lines, for replacement of lines, but we had continued to, to go ahead and replace lines that we knew were bad, and so we're, that really wasn't the issue. The issue was rate increases prior to the last few years from this council, and we just, that was, that was a different issue.
Thank you.
Mr. Campbell?
Mayor, thank you. Two questions, I think, probably are for Mrs. Gelder. I was thinking about bondings, we're discussing it. Are these revenue anticipation bonds based on sewer, sewer fees, sewer rates?
In the finance world, I believe they're just referred to as sewer bonds. They're not, they're not trans tax revenue anticipation notes, they're not tax rev, they're just, they're referred to just as sewer bonds, that's the vernacular for the finance world and the...
Not collateralized by the anticipated revenue stream?
Um, well, they are, you have to, you have to, and that's why we have to show, but they can only, you can only collateralize them for five years, even though they're 30-year bonds.
That's what I was wondering, yeah.
So, right, and so that's what we look at, is that, you know, in, in the event of, again, some major catastrophe, most of these are looked at as, as that you, you look at the strength of the city and your rating, and that's where you get your, your B+, A, AAA plus.
Right.
So we'll see where we are.
Then the other was, as Mr. Pierce looks out for replacing lines and upgrading lines for 2027, how do we mesh in our general plan and our, you know, anticipated multi-use projects in certain areas of town? Will that be provided to engineering so they'll be able to size things correctly, or?
Oh, absolutely. That's what's exciting about where we're headed with, with all of our planning documents coming forth, you know, with our general plan and having all of our elements complete and doing an overlay, a GIS overlay with our sewer master plan, our general plan, you know, and all of our elements included in there. I think in the next, by 2010, you're going to see a number of these documents here, and I'm, I'm hoping that that's going to be really slick. Someone comes in and says, I'd like to develop this, you know, it's an infill piece of property, but we have these issues or these constraints, or it's hillside property, and so we have these zoning or planning issues, but we also have, this is what we, you know, you'll have to get a, maybe you're on the county line and you'll have sewer issues, but we should be able to have, I mean, everything is anticipated to be in overlay documents.
To be able to size things?
Absolutely.
I'll actually add to that, all the way to Encina.
Pardon, sir?
All the way to Encina, including Encina capacity.
Sure.
Okay. Mrs. Ritter, you wanted to make a motion a few minutes ago.
I did want to make a motion. Do you want me to read all of them, or just, can I just say we'll adopt?
Staff?
Recommendation 1, 2, 3, and 4.
Mm-hmm. Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Please cast your votes. And the sewer master plan and environmental document are passed.
I've got enough work to do now.
Now you have to go out and do some work. All right, thank you, Mr. Pierce. Very good. Okay, we have no public hearings this evening. Staff comments from the city attorney?
Nothing this evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
From the city manager?
No, thank you, Mayor. I've made my comments already.
Okay, Mr. Lopez?
I'm Mr. Lopez.
Mr. Campbell?
I will pose a question to Mrs. Gelder. Have we heard from the fire chief as to what our conditions are in the interlands and what risks we may be at with this fire season? Are we waiting to talk about that in October?
Mr., or Chief Fisher, I believe, has gone home, and I think we can talk about that in probably next month. At the end, end of August, we'll have a report to council. It's just, he, I don't think he can predict the weather either or know when, other than how dry the season is and what, the shortage of water, but we're all aware of that. It just, the factor for us always here is how, what the, how strong the winds are going to blow.
Well, when I came off at Escondido Avenue today, it reminded me that we need to probably constantly be vigilant and do our part. Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Ritter?
I would just say that today I saw them taking down the tennis courts and the fences going up, and I'm looking forward to seeing some grading going on pretty soon, so it's pretty exciting, actually, what's going on. So keep, keep your eye on the city hall.
Okay, Mr. Gronky?
Just one thing. At my Kiwanis meeting last week, we were, there was a presentation there by the big brothers of San Diego, big brothers and big sisters, and they have a special program for the families at Camp Pendleton. It's called Operation Biggs. And basically, all they're asking is for someone to mentor these young people just one hour a week at the schools and help, help out the families of those who might be overseas in the service, fighting for our nation. A number I have here for Operation Big is 858-228-0032. And again, all they're asking is just an hour a week going to a school over there or helping out some of these young people and their families. And I thought it was worth bringing forward.
Very worthy cause. Just, oh, yes, we do have, I think it's a groundbreaking exercise coming up here fairly soon, about two weeks from tonight, or two weeks from this afternoon. We're going to have a groundbreaking of the city hall complex, and so we want to make sure that all those that are interested are there and joins us in this festive occasion. Along with that, I would hope that the contractor is very aware that this is an operating city hall in the meantime, and that they're very careful. Today, on the first day, it was a little hazardous around city hall, so hopefully that will improve.
Yes, we'll have a walking path from the sidewalk out in front of city hall into these offices here, into the council chambers, and so we will make sure that it's a little safer and we'll have better directional signs for people to get around their business.
And tractors and cars, or bulldozers and cars don't mix very well, so that we will perhaps maybe have some...
Bulldozer crossings?
Bulldozer crossings. That would be great. Thank you. This meeting is adjourned.